I'd like to call a meeting to order, the City Council Committee of the Whole Thursday, November 13th. Could you please call the whole?
Alder Radamacher.
Here.
Alder Holmquist.
Here.
Alder Wood.
Here.
Alder DeFula.
Here.
Alder Kugel.
Here.
Alder Burnskeen.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here. Please rise to pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on the nation, under God, in his love, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first up is the Senior Center. Diane is here. Welcome, Diane. We are on page 141, everybody.
Okay. The Senior Center budget for 2026 is pretty straightforward, following the guidelines from the mayor. The biggest change you'll probably see is health insurance is up. I've been here 24 years and have not used the city's health insurance, but next year I will be. So it's been a good ride, but that'll be increasing that line item. The other much smaller line item, but has a bigger bump, is R S V P. So that stands for Retired Senior Volunteer Program. We contract with them to coordinate rides for seniors and volunteers that would ride them to medical appointments only. So we've seen over the past couple of years, ridership in that program has skyrocketed. And we basically pay for the coordination of those rides and some mileage reimbursement for those volunteers. Transportation, of course, is kind of in a weird place right now in Monona with the introduction of Metro. So I don't exactly know why this is being used so greatly, but we will be surpassing the 2025 budget with next month's bill. So this is just a realistic estimate for 2026. So it's only medical appointments and, you know, pretty efficient program to get seniors to their medical rides. The only other thing to note, if you're new to the Senior Center budget, is we do not have case management in-house, like most senior centers do in Dane County. We contract with Newbridge Madison for case management, nutrition site coordination, and the home tour coordination. So those are, one of our biggest line items here is contracted senior services. That, the senior committee did agree to increase by 3%. So that is people. It's under, you know, expenditures, but these case managers don't get paid a ton, and Newbridge really has to battle to get increases in their budget, especially now with some cuts to the Dane County level. So really just trying to keep good case managers and keeping that line item where it's at. Any other, any questions on our budget?
Yeah, just as a follow-up, Diane, I was gonna say, my understanding from my one year on the Senior Committee was that R S V P has been a bit of a roller coaster because of COVID as well, right? So it was decent ridership before COVID, and then when COVID hit, they couldn't get volunteers, and people didn't want to get in a car with volunteers. And so it completely dropped off to the point where we didn't even know how necessary it was, or we were thinking, you know, did it make sense for us to be, you know, coordinating the rides rather than, you know, them coordinating the rides? Thankfully, we didn't make that call, so, because now it's gone back up. But I, just to say that, you know, I don't know that Metro has, really don't know what the reason is as much, even though there have been changes, it's definitely fluctuated back and forth.
Yeah, and it's been a slow road back to post-COVID for R S V P. But just an example of how many rides they coordinated, they were in like the, you know, 100-ish rides in 2024. Already in 2025, we're at like 222. So they're using it. It's working. Thank goodness we have volunteers worth, you know, willing to bring these seniors to their medical rides. But, so that's, yeah, why that's increased. It's a, the question was if there's any charge. There's no set charge, but you can give a donation.
That's.
Yep, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions for Diane? Seeing none? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
She's off to her next meeting, so. So she's off to her next meeting, right?
Yeah. And next up is Leah with Information Technology, and that's page 44.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
The IT budget this year represents about a 6% increase over last year. But that 6% increase is mostly due to moving some items that previously had not been into the IT budget into the IT budget. Just to sort of consolidate things, there were some software programs that were paid for from different departments. So the additions that we added were the Civics and E-newsletter had previously been, and I think the Executive Office Budget, we moved that to the IT budget. We have purchased a new Agenda Management Software, which I've been promising you that you're gonna see soon, and you will, but that is in this budget. Our social media archiving service is all in this budget. And then this year, we also consolidated forces and are using the same time and attendance and scheduling software across all departments in the city. The Park and Rec Seasonals use a different thing that's completely text-based. But other than that, we've consolidated all of our, all of that into one software package, and it's working well. Previously, we had different packages because the needs of different departments are just so different in terms of scheduling. It's hard to find one software package that works, but we did find one that works for both the police and fire departments and adapts for the rest of the department. So that is saving us some money. We don't have to pay separately for each of those different softwares. And then we also, for this year, new for 2026, we are going, we have purchased a policy management module, which is through NeoGov, which is our recruiting software, and hope with that that, A, we'll be able to really get our operations policies all consolidated and in an electronic software format that are easily searchable. But also, we'll be able to onboard employees on our onboarding portal and sign policies for them to read right on their onboarding portal as they onboard. So it'll be a much better situation than we currently have. And I have Jaren here from Land Tech, our IT consultant, to answer any questions you have.
Any questions? Yeah, Doug.
Leah, you already know, I've been interested in the future of AI in the city. Could you maybe just talk a little bit about where you see us, what the present is, and where we might go from here?
Okay. Presently, I don't believe that any departments are using much, if any, AI. That's a good thing, because we're not paying for any AI. So we really don't want departments to be putting in city information into publicly available software. The cost to purchase, like a Microsoft Copilot AI license, is about $30 per person per month. So it's not a super inexpensive prospect, but it's not out of the world. My sense across municipalities, just from different conferences, like our insurance conference that I've been to, is that municipalities are pretty slow on the uptake with AI. Most are not using AI in any significant way. There's obviously things we have to consider, like saving information for open records requests. So my feeling on AI is that it's coming. Jaren and I were just talking about it today. It's coming. It's being used. I'm sure that we will have uses for it. I know, I spoke with Chief McMullin. I know the fire department. Some of their vendors have some AI uses in terms of reporting and things like that. So it's coming, but we really have to have our policies in place and figure out what makes sense to use AI for, what doesn't make sense, what's acceptable, what's not acceptable. And we're going to have to have our own private cloud when we do use AI. Do you want to add anything to that, Jaren?
Yeah, so the one area that we actually are using AI is in our contracted services with Barracuda, our security platform that is AI-generative, meaning that it scans the links that are in email, you know, it instantaneously crosses, cross-checks everything with databases and stuff, and that is AI-driven. As of right now, there, like Leah said, we don't have any subscriptions, and we were literally just talking about this today, that, you know, with open records, it's, it's coming down the road, but we don't know when and if the state is going to make a judgment on, hey, yeah, no, you guys need to monitor that. So it's, for government entities, it's kind of a slippery slope to try and walk and navigate, just because we don't, there are currently no regulations. And with the rate that the state is taking on some other incidences with open records, mainly personal devices, they've been working on a policy for over four years now that they still have not completed. So I don't see them making a judgment on AI anytime soon. So with that, it was, we had the conversation today that, you know, if we want to slowly start with a license or two, we need to start discussing that and see how we can utilize it, but very slowly and very selectively.
Yeah. Teresa?
Comment and a question, I guess. In my business, working with government agencies as an IT service provider, the reason AI comes into my conversations is as a security risk. And how can we predict the way that our customers are using AI? And how can we prevent themselves from getting in a lot of trouble by the way that they're using it? Something to consider. Also, Leah, you mentioned that you looked around at other municipalities and that, you know, not very quick to adopt it. I'm okay with that. I think a government needs to be cautious and move slowly on new technologies and wait till they're tried and proven in the field. We don't experiment with, you know, tax per year dollars. And then lastly, I would say that if there's a good business reason why you think AI is something to do, sure, let's talk about it. But you don't just adopt technology for technology's sake, right?
100% agree.
Yeah, okay.
Rick?
Yeah, thank you, Jared. I think to get that grant, I'm wondering, we got the grant, I'm wondering where we are in implementation.
We created that budget amendment. I am working with Fortinet on finalizing the numbers for the exact number of licenses that we want and getting, I'm trying to get a steeper discount. As, you know, when we, when we filled out the application, that was back in March. Prices always change in technology, so I'm trying to get multibank for the buck to cover the services for everyone.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? I just want to give a kudos to Leah and the rest of the staff, but especially Leah, because, you know, she just referenced in her budget that, in this budget, that, you know, we've adopted new agenda software. We're looking at policy software and, you know, we've done the scheduling software. And I just know, I can tell you, the very first meeting I had with Leah as mayor, she had read that I had a background in process improvement, and she said, oh my God, can we use that? You know, we never, you know, we never have time, right? The staff is so busy that it's really hard for them to dial back. And I know it's been something that Neil has really advocated for too, and we've been working on in City Hall to make things more efficient. And I'm just very appreciative of the efforts to date. So, thank you. Okay, great. Thank you. That brings us to Chief Jerry Friar in EMS. Fire starts on page 64.
This seems to be the popular seat, so I'll take your time. Good evening. First of all, thank you for the meal. Fire protection. Budget's pretty straightforward, again, following the mayor's instructions. The increases that you see in the different line items are basically cost of living increases for the different items that we use. Nothing, nothing outstanding about the budget. The only note that I will make, because it was brought up, public safety as well, was the maintenance budget. We left it as the same because Engine 4 is going away. This year, we've spent just under $18,000 in maintenance on it. The new engine coming in in March has a five-year bumper-to-bumper warranty on it. So we felt comfortable leaving that where it's at for 2026. But other than that, I welcome any questions.
Questions for the chief? No? Yeah, Doug?
Can, you want to talk about how the POP program is working?
Fabulously well. So the staffing is great. I will send out a quick kudos to our three newest volunteers who are pulling a whole lot of time at the station. Eli and Christian are each putting in a shift or two a week, if not more. Eli, who Alder Radamacher knows, they all came onboard October 11th officially. He's already responded to 50 calls.
Okay.
Of course, he's two blocks away, which is fabulous. It means he's responding even when he's not on the schedule. So everybody that I've talked to has been satisfied with how we set it up. Again, we set it up to be relatively conservative. As you can see, and Mark can attest, we're gonna come in under that line item this year. But we set it up that way to feel out how, with the way we changed the pay structure, how everybody felt about it. And the feedback I've got has all been very positive. So we were happy with leaving that where it was at, and it gives us room to grow if we need to.
So you're getting people to show up for shifts?
Yep.
When they sign up, they show up and?
October 11th, I'll reference that day again, was the day of our open house. We had 13 calls that day. We had a fully staffed engine and our ambulance going. Literally, right as we opened the open house, we had three actual fire calls, along with two EMS calls. That's happening more often than not, where we have a couple, three volunteers during the day. They'll generally take the brush truck, and it's been working out very, very well. Good?
Did you by chance have the video running when the 13 calls were happening at the same time you were doing the open house?
It was.
Might come in handy, I'm just saying.
I mean, it was nonstop for a good four hours. And we still had enough people down at the station to run the open house as well, so.
Yeah. Teresa?
Chief, I just had a question. When you were talking about this new firefighter who responded to 50 calls, but he lives a couple blocks away. So then in my mind, I was thinking, so how does that work? Like, the call goes out and somebody, and people just say, I got it? Or they just volunteer to go to it?
So we use I-in responding.
Yeah.
So whenever the fire department half is paged, so if there's a high-level EMS call or a second EMS call, the fire department gets paged, or a fire call, it notifies all of our firefighters, and they'll respond to the station to take that call.
And so when you've, when you received a certain number of calls, you're like, okay, we don't need anymore?
No, no. He can, he can respond to as many as he wants. I was pointing that out as a, as a effort to show how responsive he is.
Oh, so, but there's no, like, financial incentive for a person to respond? Like, you don't get paid for the number of times you respond. You're just paid what you're paid.
Correct. So they get, they get 25% of whatever their stipend is?
Yeah.
If they respond to calls when they're not on shift.
Sure.
So there's a small financial incentive, but Eli is going above and beyond.
But just as a follow-up question about that, chief, so even though it's a small amount, if, I don't know, slow day in Wisconsin, and, you know, 10 of your paid-on-premise people, you know, show up, and you don't need that many?
They only, they only show up if there's a call. So what we, what we always tell our volunteers is, because what traditionally happens on the volunteer side is they'll look at the page and see what it is, and then decide whether or not they want to respond or not.
Right.
Oh, it's just a fire alarm? I'm not gonna respond. So what we tell our volunteers is, if the tones go off, come to the station. Don't even bother to look about what it is. You'll figure it out when you get to the station. So fire department only gets paged when it's needed. And I will tell you, there's a 99% chance we don't have more volunteers than we can use.
Okay.
Generally speaking, the folks that get there to respond are the folks that live in town.
Right.
So unless it's a big incident, like a structured fire, really bad accident, we'll get some that come in from outside of town that might staff a second truck. But by and large, we'll get two or three to respond, generally the folks that live here in town.
Okay, so it's not like 10 people would show up and really you only need four, because you've got other people scheduled and, okay. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, that takes us to EMS, which is 152. Page 152.
I'll start with revenues on the EMS side. Notice there's a $55,000 increase. We've been doing very well, to where we should be with our revenues. We're well above our revenue for the year already. We had to increase some costs on the expenditure side simply due to the number of calls that we're responding to and the amount of revenue that we're making. So it's a 5% fee that EMS MC charges to collect, and when we collect more money, they charge us more money. So the line item for service contracts, you know, goes up by $10,000 next year. Along with that, there's supply increases. Again, we're catching more calls, so the cost of supplies, all that beyond the 3% that we were given was funded out of revenues. So overall, it's a, we maintain what the mayor asked of us, and use increased revenues to cover the increased expenditures.
Questions? Anything? Seeing, seeing none? Okay.
I will put a quick note in, Alder Woods, simply because you asked about AI. It is very, very much on my radar. Our PCR software that we do all of our patient reporting on does have an AI assist, is what they call it. They have a closed server AI program that allows us to scan pictures, like driver's license, that sort of thing, and it inputs it into the call for you. It also has the ability to write a narrative, which we have turned off. That is a hard line stance of, there is no AI use for patient care narratives. CMS tends to frown upon that. They have filters that check for AI tags, and they tend to reject those calls. AI is not to be used for narratives. That's our current policy. I'm actually updating the policy to cover AI for other things, which will come to public safety, probably in the new year, probably January, February. But the immediate policy is no AI use for PCRs. Even though it's a closed server loop, too much, too many bad things can happen right now, because it kind of reminds me of the Wild West when it comes to technology. There's just too many, it's connected to too many different things that we don't know about. And when it comes to patient identification and patient information, we'd rather not risk that at this rate.
Thanks for that. I mean, I think, I think it does highlight, though, whether we want it to or not, it's here, it's coming more. And if we, if we don't have an internal, if we don't set a policy, you know, it's gonna be kind of hot mission creep. I think people start using it, so.
I agree.
Jerry, you wanted just, you had described to me the other day in terms of the two, the two key things that it wants to do for you.
Yeah, so I was just up at EMS MC's symposium, two weeks ago now, in the past week, and they had their head of technology, and he explained it very simply. He's like, AI exists for two reasons. AI exists to give you what you're asking for and to make you happy. That's what it exists for. And he's like, unfortunately, it will make you happy over, at the cost of giving you accurate information. It'll give you what you're asking for, it just may not be accurate. They had an example of a PCR narrative written by AI, which was a beautiful narrative. The only problem was it was all lies. Because unless you provided all the information for the narrative, it just goes out and finds something to match what you're looking for to make you happy. And it's a great narrative, it was just all lies. So after that, and coming back from that, yeah, the hard line is no AI use right now. There will be an internal policy strictly for firing EMS usage, but whatever that policy ends up being, we'll work with Leah, make sure that the city policy matches, our policy matches, what the city's looking for as well. Until things get much, much more regulated, it will not be used in EMS PCRs.
For the record, Alder, we have started pulling some existing policies from Lexible, what the chief's been using, and then we've actually found a couple of other ones. Particularly, law enforcement seems to be a little bit more ahead of the curve on some of their policies and procedures. So we're starting to kind of collect some templates already, so.
Patrick?
There are guidelines on the League of Wisconsin Municipalities website. They're working in conjunction with the State of Wisconsin on continuing to develop policy for AI use in municipalities. So there are resources out there, and there are municipalities using it. So it's, it's coming.
Yeah.
Already here.
Well, it's just how we adopt it.
Yeah.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay. That takes us to police. Chief Chaney, and the police starts at page 57.
Good evening. One of the city's biggest budgets, so thank you for your confidence in me and managing that budget, and one of your biggest commodities, which is part of your public safety team and people, which is where most of the expense goes. So when talking about, and following the mayor's orders of cost to continue and adding the 3%, overall, if you review, if you, if you scan sort of the spreadsheet on page 57, you will see that a significant cost is to the police salaries, and that has to do with the contractual obligations for next year's pay increase for members of the union, but also non-union that have to sort of keep in pace with their subordinate officers, if that makes any sense. We can't pay our detective the same rate as our sergeant. So we have to continue to provide the spread in between. So all of that does add up. And so that's what you're seeing reflected in some of the salary increases. As you, as you well know, we have a community service officer who's doing a great job. It's a part-time position that's split between duties of crossing guard, parking enforcement, but also with our, working with our city hall and our planning director in terms of code enforcement. The number has changed to reflect more money going into our budget, right, Mark?
Yeah.
As well as Doug has some too. Right, good. Wanted to make sure I got it right. But he's still working the same amount of hours as part-time, and so that's gonna continue until the mayor, administrator, and you all approve or say otherwise. But right now, in terms of our needs, something that I manage, which is parking enforcement, school crossing guards, and other public safety needs, the hours he's putting in for us is doing quite well, and it's actually supplementing the work that the officers are doing out there every day, particularly in terms of parking enforcement. So. The other increase, you've already heard about the cost of health insurance. Managing most of you all are impacted by that in your personal lives as well, so that's, that's a pretty significant increase as well. In looking at professional development and below, so sort of the line items where I have a little bit more discretion in terms of increases. have a little bit more discretion in terms of increases or decreases, moving, uh, the balance of that three percent around, I'll just go over the ones in which, uh, have changed and maybe offer some context as to why those decisions were made. Uniform allowance, um, the cost of uniforms has gone up quite a bit. One of my officers was wearing a pair of pants that cost one hundred and twenty-seven dollars the other day, um, and so I said, well, I'll wait till my pants get worn down just a little bit more, still looking presentable, but, um, the cost of uniforms are just going through the roof. And so, um, we have a contractual obligation to pay, uh, each officer a uniform allowance, and so that's a large factor. But also, what goes into that is when we hire new officers, in which we will be hiring one full-time officer next year, um, we have to provide that officer a full set of of an entire uniform. So we're talking easily right off the bat about twenty-five hundred dollars just on equipping, uh, that new officer, so. So that increase, uh, is 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 reflected in that change there. Telephone, um, has gone down based on our contractual usage, so from four thousand to thirty-six hundred. We've increased some of our service contracts and office equipment, um, quite a bit, and that is because we've maneuvered some money that used to come out of the the emergency communications slash dispatch budget. We've maneuvered that over to law enforcement because it's most applicable to law enforcement. Uh, we have one account that's called Leads Online, which is sort of monitoring our pawn service. Uh, it's a company that you can contract with, where you have access to items that are pawned, um, throughout the country. And we need that for follow-up to theft investigations, burglary investigations, and it actually helps solve a lot of our property crimes. That cost per year is roughly about thirty-two hundred dollars, right? And so that is more of a law enforcement, sort of investigative side of the house versus a dispatch side of the house. We used to take that out of dispatch. And so that's when I'm when I'm talking about moving sort of money from dispatch to, uh, law enforcement side, uh, that's what I'm referring to, that's an example of that. Office supplies, um, there's a slight decrease there based on our current consumption and purchases. I'll skip down to, sorry, I'm sorry, trying to track here. Police supplies, uh, we did a decrease on that as well, again, based on our, uh, consumption and estimated consumption. Scrolling down to the, uh, equipment and maintenance repair, same explanation there, and the same goes with, um, our tech. IT annual license, you'll see that that is a new item. That if that is for our iPro devices, so all of our recording devices in our vehicles, all of the recording devices for the body worn cameras in our interview rooms, all run off of a software that requires licensing. In previous years, uh, me and my predecessor have come before you as a capital item expense, and that is has been corrected. It's more appropriate as an operating expense, and I'm assuming Mark is nodding his head behind me, um, and that and that is why that, uh, funding line is now under operating costs. So any questions on that, because that's something new? Okay. Increase in vehicle maintenance and repair, um, and that's simply because of, uh, a couple of our vehicles are getting older. We have a patrol vehicle right now that's hopefully, uh, going to be placed out of service next year, but it's running at about one hundred and ten thousand miles on it for a patrol vehicle. It's one of our oldest in the fleet, it's a hybrid vehicle, and as you know, uh, we've had some struggles with that technology, and it's something that our our, um, fleet maintenance, uh, tech is is not, uh, capable to repair. And that's costing some money. And we anticipate as our fleet gets older, um, there will be additional costs, not as much as a brand-new vehicle costs, but that's why you'll see that my increasing that line item to help cover some of those costs for vehicle repair. That's all for the increases and decreases, um, in sort of my discretionary ability to move money around within my line items. But I just want to say, give a give a comment about the training money that that this council has funded for its police department. We're adjusting to that because frankly, we're not used to that, but we are spending said money. I'll I'll be perfectly candid, our assistant chief, who has a finance background, uh, helps us sort of with the day-to-day purchase acquisition, monit- help assists me in monitoring that side of the house as well. There was a point in time in which she said, chief, um, you know, I'm a little concerned because we're spending this money, we're you know, doing an in-service training and we're you're doing crisis intervention training and we're sending officers back out to vehicle operations course and, you know, I'm sending these invoices in, our these purchase orders in, and where are we coming up with this money? I forgot to remind her that you all had authorized us with a significant amount of money and that she's, I think in the session with Mark, she says, I totally didn't know that. And she was in a secret panic, um, but eventually told me that she had some concerns, and so we, I relayed to her, I am so sorry, yes, uh, the council had that authorized and and had provided us with with training funding, so.
Not on Sarah's watch, right?
No, I I my ownership, right, my I I own it. But it but it's it's something that even in her twenty-eight years here, she's she's not seen. And so we are very appreciative of that, we are using it. We've been able to send folks to specialized training, like I mentioned, crisis intervention, domestic abuse, human trafficking, all of the things that, um, sadly occur here in Monona, but it's a reality that we live in and it's something that you pay us to address, pay attention to, become better at investigating and caring for victims of crime. And so this is helping us be a better police department. So I just wanted to say thank you for continuing and considering to continue to fund that in the future.
Actually, we have a question that relates to training, which is, um, certainly prior to the referendum, um, operating referendum, for a number of years, we were really struggling whenever we needed to go out and recruit new people and we, um, for the first time in Monona's history that I'm aware of, we started paying for people to go through the academy. And I know that's something that the commission was managing, if you felt like you had somebody that needed that, um, but I'm also assuming since, uh, you and I meet, uh, and you've had some new hires, that that's becoming, not that we wouldn't do it if needed, but that that's becoming less needed because the quality of the people that are coming and applying, is that is that accurate? Because obviously putting someone through the academy is is a significant expense.
Yeah, so we we in my time here, thank you, Mayor, for that question, my time here, which is a little over four years now, um, we've done, I've done a hiring process every year. Not that we have a retention problem, we've had retirements and we've had a couple resignations. But, um, this year was the most we've ever had apply, uh, to our police department, and, that's that's a good problem in that we had to interview, panel interview eighteen people. And I personally interviewed after those went through the panel and were referred to me, uh, about nine or ten interviews. Each of those candidates, uh, interviewed well, they had, uh, backgrounds that were very, uh, you know, intriguing enough to to dig deeper, um, and so they were forwarded onto a background investigation and we narrowed that down to four candidates, and the Police and Fire Commission authorized the hire of all four that we presented to them after their own review of their background and interviewing them without me in the room, okay? Of the four, here's where I'm getting at, two are lateral officers, meaning that they're already police officers elsewhere, and two are not. So two, um, would would we hire would need that, uh, pre-service academy. We have extended a conditional job offer to one lateral officer who comes with roughly twenty years of law enforcement experience, and ten of those are which are from the City of Madison Police Department. And we, uh, provided, uh, a conditional offer, a hire to the, uh, another person who does not have an academy experience, but that will be for a part-time officer position in which us as city taxpayer or state taxpayers are going to pick up the tab on that, uh, through through grant, um, and and pay for that officer to go through the academy, on the condition that, um, he complete his undergraduate degree, sort of a gentleman's handshake between that officer and I, but that he, um, once he's out of the academy, he will contribute as a as a part-time officer for you all. What that does is obviously that creates, uh, that opportunity to recruit should we have a future vacancy, and this officer was also an intern with us as well, uh, last year, and is finishing up his college degree about a year, year and a half left. And so we have a lot more avenues in which we can recruit, um, and frankly, um, I think people want to work here because of you all, because of this community, um, because they feel supported, um, and they're, uh, I think a lot of good things are happening here in Monona, so.
Well, I would probably beg to differ with a little bit that I think they want to come and work here because they know we have a really terrific force that does good work in this community, so, back at you.
Thanks.
So if somebody needs to go through the academy, um, remind me where the resources come from for that, if that needs to be the case, is that come through a special amendment or we take it out of the general fund? I'm I'm forgetting where that comes from if we need to put somebody through school.
If, uh, so we have an MOU with the with the union that says that we will hire somebody seventy-five percent of their, uh, starting wage, um, while they're attending the academy. And that twenty-five percent balance makes up the difference in the cost of, uh, what it would cost the city to put them through the academy. So by the time that they're out of the academy, that's when they bump up to one hundred percent.
Okay.
So it's a wage salary saving.
So the reduction in salary makes up the cost.
So the employee is still paying for their own academy?
It's part of the union contract.
Yes.
Which which says they're going to pay, I mean, we're both right, you know, yeah.
Yeah, and there's there's also a clause about, uh, the city can choose to, um, go after if should the person resign.
Right.
And and you all can choose to, uh, seek reimbursement for any costs.
Because they're still, I mean, they're getting paid.
Yeah, they're not working, right.
They're getting paid seventy-five percent.
They're getting paid seventy-five percent.
They're getting paid for going to school, seventy-five percent.
Just less than they would if they were.
Right.
Yeah, so it's a it's an even balance.
Yeah, it's my mistake.
Thank you for clarifying that. Yeah, Teresa?
I do have a question, just, um, there's one line that I couldn't find an explanation for it in the narrative, Chief, and it's just about the CSO, and I'm sorry if you've already explained it, but would you just mind saying a few words about that again?
Sure, uh, so that's our community service officer, uh, currently right now, that's, uh, Kim Richmond, uh, who doubles as our crossing guard, uh, and, uh, does parking enforcement, and that's on my side of the house. He also works on, uh, the city hall side of the house, uh, under Director Plowman, doing cold enforcement work. Spends about five hours doing cold enforcement work during the week, and the balance of the time of his part-time job, he's doing the work on my side, as I previously described.
I I my question is related to the increase from twelve thousand to twenty-one thousand.
Here comes Mark.
Thank you.
It's 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 interesting because we, well, I don't want to over-speak here.
It's a shared resource between the two departments.
Yeah, if you go to the inspection budget, can I talk about last night, the inspection budget? The line item for salaries has been reduced by basically that amount that's been transferred over to the police department. So it's a it's a zero effect, it's just if you look at the, uh, the budget for inspections, you'll see the decrease that's offset.
Okay, so it's just shifted over to the police?
It just, we went back and, um, we all three with Leah too, tried to figure out what the actual allocation was.
Right.
Okay.
You know, and so that was based on the actual allocation.
It's actually how he's spending his time.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay, no, that that explains it, thanks.
Any other questions? Yes, Doug?
Well, first, I want to thank you for bringing up the training line, because I was going to ask about that, and I think we saw that the chief sat in the other day for the license review committee meeting, we have one of the licenses, I think he was the massage parlor license he wanted to be there for, but I think part of your training helped inform you to deal with that situation.
One hundred percent it did.
I just wanted to give you a chance to talk about AI too, since it was mentioned that you guys are are in it, so.
Well, law enforcement is in it. We we, I I'm trying to think of a scenario in which we have other than, um, I've seen it it's a, well, I don't try to filter too. I'd like to say it's generational, it's something I never used, it's something I'm learning about, right, but it's here. And our younger workforce, um, is is accustomed to it and, um, there've been there've been tendencies, not in terms of report writing necessarily at this point, but I will talk about that, but when given tasks and assignments of, uh, using the Cliffs Notes version, um, for lack of a better term, um, and we have discovered that when they do so, it's 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 the math ain't add enough, it's not accurate, as as Jerry mentioned, right? And so we have made sure that we are regulating that by way of policy when they're doing something that's work-related, even if it's, say, a light duty officer and I've assigned a task of to do some research, um, we don't just put it in ChatGTP, um, we actually spend the time to do the research to make sure what we're requesting is accurate. And if you do put it in JetGTP, there's a verification process, right, that's expected, and that's all outlined in our, um, our policy, our law enforcement policy. Now, um, having gone to conventions, um, thanks to you all, uh, I've become more aware that this technology is out there and is being used for law enforcement, um, quite broadly with some departments. Axon, uh, which is a manufacturer of, uh, software and hardware for body worn cameras, does a lot of things, a lot of really cool things. One of the the features that, um, uh, body worn technology that's out there is that it can actually, uh, listen and, uh, translate into different languages as you're interacting with somebody, right? So you come across an individual who speaks Vietnamese, I don't speak Vietnamese, my body camera recognizes that and I can activate translation services, um, live as I'm communicating with the person. It also will then, the same software, um, will then transcribe your entire interaction in a police report. I have some reservations about that, um, and some of my colleagues in, you know, other chiefs have some concerns and reservations about that, and there's some legal questions about that. Officer, did somebody who works for the DA's office, officer, did you, uh, write that report? Is is often a question we get on the stand. Well, did they? Right?
Right.
And so, um, our policy right now regulates that, they're 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 not authorized to use any AI technology in which the department, the chief of the department has not authorized, and I've not authorized any with the exception of an aide for research like, um, ChatGPT or other, uh, AI platforms that are out there for research.
Okay. It sounds like, though, from what I'm hearing, both from the chief, uh, fire chief as your as well as yourself, that you guys both have policies already in your departments, is that right?
And thanks to Lexible, yeah, yes.
What's what is Lexible?
I'm sorry, Lexible is our policy management software that some of you authorized to purchase by using ARPA funds to acquire. Uh, you'll probably see Jerry and I and the mayor before you in a couple of years because that, uh, we're due for a renewal, uh, but you all spent about eighty thousand dollars for the implementation of that policy, it's not going to cost that much for a renewal, but, uh, that is a management policy software that both the police and fire department use.
Okay, so obviously, if you changed from what I was, just the way you and, um, Chief McMullin were talking about it, it sounded like maybe you guys had created a policy, and I know that when you create a new policy, you come to us, so that's why I was just wanting to clarify that it's just through Lexible that you're referring to policy.
Right, so they recommend policy, they recommend changes, uh, they follow, they pay attention to the statutory changes that will that they urge us to implement because of the statutory changes, so we review and we, as department heads, choose, yes, I accept, no, I don't, yes, with this, you know, adaptation for Monona, no, I'll keep it, you know, just as you present. And in me, um, there are about eight policies that I can't touch without your authorization anyway.
Right.
And so some of those will be coming before you in future council meetings, um, whereas there are some statutory changes such as the the state statute itself, the numbers have changed, and so I need to make that reflect in the policy. So Lexible does all of that legwork for us. of that legwork for us.
Right.
I, of course, verify, right? And then review, there's an internal review, there's a discussion at public safety, and then it comes before you for my request to adopt.
Okay.
And that's only on the policies per resolution that I don't have any control over, that you all control.
Right.
Technically, you have control over everything, but.
Right.
Yeah.
Same answer, the issue is, this is changing so fast.
Yeah.
That even the models we've pulled already were like, oh, well, there's like a dozen things we should probably be adding to, to consider it. So it's, which, pulling from multiple different sources is gonna, is gonna, we're gonna have to do that, just to make sure we're, the best chance of keeping it most current, because I'm sure every time we get something set up, there's another application, someone's figured out how to do that, like, oh, do we really want to do that or not?
And, and the reference, the reference to LexiPole too, we, I don't take that as gospel, so to speak, right? I also look at other, you know, what other policies might be out there, what other research on the topic.
It's a great start.
It's a, it's an amazing start. And in terms of efficiency, it certainly saves me some time.
Absolutely.
Right. Any other questions on your, for the police side of things? Okay, now we'll move to dispatch.
Page seventy-three is at least what says on my end.
Yep.
Yeah.
So most of the three percent increase cost to continue was consumed by salaries and health insurance. And so I had to, really, my discretionary items were professional development on down. And you'll see a decrease just to balance out that total three percent. And we've managed that by actually line items, the budget items that we used to take from the emergency communications, we now take from, like the example I gave you earlier, we now take from the law enforcement side of the house. So that leads online story I was giving you, that is what is helping us keep to this three percent total. So you'll see a reduction in professional development. Frankly, you know, a thousand dollars per dispatcher is enough. We were, my original ask for the six thousand was for consideration of our part-time dispatchers who do a lot of work here as well. We think we can, we can manage to also offer, to provide them the resource for training. So the thousand dollars reduction in that line, there are some service contract savings that now the law enforcement side of the house is going to be covering. So you'll see a reduction in that line. Same with dispatch supplies, you know, some things that mainly the officers were using, we're now gonna make sure that that's out of the law enforcement budget. And the same with dispatch equipment. There's a reduction there as well.
So, hang on a second, Brian. So if you could speak to the question that I asked you when we discussed this budget specific to dispatch. And I know one of the questions that often comes up in the community is why do we have our own dispatch rather than going with county and, and something that comes up with public safety committee as well? And so for our public's benefit and our benefit, if you could share your perspective on that, that would be great.
Absolutely. Well, first, I'll say I have a little bit advantage in that I came from a large agency that didn't have their own dispatch center, the Madison Police Department. Although they have the dedicated dispatchers from the nine-one-one comm center in downtown Madison, that's a county entity, it's still a shared resource, right? And, and working for the second largest agency in the state, I can tell you that there were times in which that center has been overwhelmed. All it takes is one major weather event in the county. We've had tornadoes in this county. We've had significant power outages in this county. And you can see that on the officer's side of the house when those things happen. And that, and this is not by any means to disparage their work. They're incredible people. They're incredibly dedicated, and they, they work hard. But when, when events happen, you certainly see it on the street, and you feel it on the street. So you're less likely, if there's an event that's happening in Verona, you're less likely to do a traffic stop in Manona because of, you know how busy their dispatch center is, right? It's just a natural. So you're impacted by everything else that's happening in the county. Having our own dispatch center and our dedicated dispatcher who's paying attention to us is, is an increased safety commodity for us. But also, if you think about it, we have, we provide a tremendous service, in my opinion, to the residents of Manona. We have persons who rely on our knowledge of their issues and of their concerns, and don't necessarily want to go through what has happened to them the last ten, five times they called. If you call the communication center, you're going to have to repeat yourself. They don't know, or maybe recall who you are the last time you called. We know you by name as soon as your phone rings to the dispatch center. We will likely know your cause, your issue, your concern. I think it's a different level of customer service in that we are working with a smaller population, albeit that anybody can call us, right? Somebody at Walmart, in Walmart regularly calls, or people at Walmart regularly call. But we have the ability to, to provide a different level of service to the people who pay us to do the job. In addition to that, you know, we have weather events here in town, and we manage that through calling and having close working relationships with our DPW and other folks. That would have to be outsourced potentially, or they'd have to rely on the officer working the streets to stop what they're doing, to call, as we all know, Jeff and company, to come in town at two o'clock in the morning to address the problem. Our dispatchers handle that. Our dispatchers are also the first person that you will likely interact with when you call, obviously, or when you stop at the service window in dispatch, which is available twenty-four hours a day. And we do have people that come and contact the police to report problems or concerns or domestic violence or sexual assaults at two o'clock in the morning. And you are meeting a very customer-oriented, friendly dispatcher who will quickly connect you with a Manona police officer. You don't have that type of service necessarily with communities that don't have their own dispatch center. Our dispatchers also double as our records staff. Every single one of them supports our requirements of reporting and transferring reports and data to the state and the FBI. They also transcribe reports. They prepare reports for court. They handle things like OWI report processing. They, they handle and prepare cases for the municipal court clerk. We need that resource. And if we eliminate that, we, you all would, you'd see me asking you to hire at least four folks anyway to help supplement that requirement, your record staff. And so what I said to the mayor was, you know, we have a rotating team of five dispatchers who are in, they're part of us. They're, they're part of this police department. They know, perfect example today from one of our newest dispatchers, your officers right now are on a stolen auto car, call, not involving a pursuit, a stolen auto call. And you have one of our newest dispatchers that just started a few months ago. It's probably two months solo patrol, so to speak, at the desk right now, who could tell by the inflection of the officer's voice that something was wrong. Right? That's, that's powerful, and that's something that keeps us safe. She was able to adjust and give priority to whatever that officer was saying. What they were saying was that they had found a gun on the person and that they, that was in the stolen car, right? And so she, she missed what was said out loud, because it's windy and it's hard to hear, but could tell something was wrong by the inflection. And as it turns out, the officers recovered a gun that was, that was on the person. I'm not saying that the county dispatcher wouldn't be good. They just wouldn't know us that well. Because think about it, there are only about five other agencies in the, in the county that have their own dispatch centers. Everyone else filters through the Dane County nine-one-one center, and they provide that service. And all of those other agencies share one police radio channel. Every single one of them. They borrow in, just Fitchburg now. You know, they, they all, you name it, suburban agencies, with the exception of a few, all share one radio channel with the entire, all of the county deputies, right? And how many of them are there out there? So it becomes, I think, an important commodity that helps, number one, keep us safe. It provides us, the, the community with good customer service. And frankly, it, I'm just trying to speak honestly here. I think it's going to be a shock to the system when folks call and get a phone tree. It's just not how we do things here in Manona. And, and I think that, that's something that you all in this community will have to decide in the future. You all obviously have that authority to do so. I just, I just caution because it'll come at a, I think, a customer service consequence.
Thank you. From my point of view, certainly the customer service you just referenced is really important. But I would just echo what you also said about records, that they're doing, they're not just doing, they're not just sitting around waiting for a phone call. They have other administrative, really important, critical administrative things that they have to do in terms of record-keeping for the department.
Mayor, that's.
Brian? Did you have something?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you speak to the dispatch equipment? Historically, that hasn't been a line item here. I'm not sure if it's equipment that we were pulling out of capital, and now it's been shifted here. But it looks like there was a good portion put in the 2025, and it doesn't look like much was spent. I'm just curious.
Yeah, a lot of that's because most of the things we buy are at the end of the year when we've, like, we've run out of it, or we need to re-up button things like our pamphlets and other equipment items that we need. So we typically wait till the end of the year to buy a lot of our equipment items. And honestly, it's also part of our break-in case of emergency fund, in terms of if we cannot buy this one item that we still need, let's hold off on it until, to make sure that we don't go over budget, right? We still need these items, but let's make sure. So let me, you have, I don't know, Mark, when this was printed, but I, I printed the most up-to-date one that I have that released on November thirty of the year. Let me see what that line item is now. We spent about twelve hundred dollars of that, and we anticipate to spend another five grand in the next couple of weeks.
How is it different than dispatch supplies? Because I see supplies as the pamphlets, the things that we're waiting to see, usable commodity items. Dispatch equipment, to me, seems like something you're buying that's sticking around. The office chairs that we use to haggle over every year.
I don't remember exactly when last year during the referendum, we were trying to move some of that stuff off from capital projects, especially small.
Borrowing.
Small dollar amounts. I don't remember exactly what they were last year. There was a bunch of them, little things. They were little, small dollars, less than like three thousand dollars each.
Yeah.
And that was moved into the, to the operating, so it's kind of, I don't remember exactly, their computers. They might need one laptop. They might need one for their training laptop, things like that. And monitors, updates, they have to do all, they control all the monitors and all this. So TVs and things like that. That's kind of a little bigger than supplies, not like a major cap line, so that's why they're in this account.
So some of the, some of the hardware too, that I'm, I'm just thinking of, you know, they use mics, like microphones, and press a button literally thousands of times. That fails, so we have to buy a new microphone, a keyboard. They're literally typing on a keyboard. I mean, that's a cost. The monitors, as Mark mentioned, that are literally on twenty-four seven, those go out from time to time.
Do you guys have expensive chairs, because they're not twenty-four?
Chairs aren't cheap either. But yes, we originally, we originally had a chair. I think we had in that line, a shredder that is still leaking. So that's something that's, at the end of the year, we're gonna look at replacing. The shredders, the, these industrial shredders that we use, I don't know if any of you are familiar, they're not cheap, like a couple grand easily. But that's something to me is a, yes, we need to have it, and there's a budget for it. But I'm not gonna expense, expend that money, or spend that money until like December, right? In the event that there's another need, or the last thing I want to do is go over budget. So I'd rather wait until we absolutely may need to make that acquisition. We still need it. But that's why you're not seeing that, that line item increase.
Okay, thank you.
Teresa, did you have something?
No, I'm good, thanks. Okay.
And I think we did have a shredder on there at one point.
It was a small dollar.
Anybody else?
No.
No? No? Okay. Thank you, chief.
You all have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
That takes us to Director Stefani. First up is general building, and that's page number fifty-three.
Want to take a break first?
Yeah.
You good?
Are we good?
I can be quick.
That's all right.
Director Stefani and I were joking a little bit today. We said, just, we're just gonna ask our motion to approve right away, so. He does actually, because he does very nice synopsis of all changes in his accounts.
Yes.
Very precise, so.
Yes, yeah.
Which I believe he's handing out.
Yes, he has. And so, yes, for the, particularly for Rachel, since this, Rachel, this is your first operating budget. This unbelievably nice synopsis of the changes in his budget is something that Dan always does, and is very helpful, given the depth and breadth of his, his different budgets. Makes it very easy to follow along.
Okay.
So then, go ahead, Dan.
Thank you, mayor. As mayor mentioned, I did pass out what I call a budget highlight sheet. It's, I placed it in front of you before the meeting tonight. Since I have eleven budgets and numerous line items, what I've done every year is highlight, I guess, the biggest movers, whether they're an increase or decrease in expenditures of five hundred dollars or more. And I just give you a basic explanation of why it either increased or decreased. But if you have questions on any of the budgets, of the, of the narratives, please let me know, and I can provide a more detailed explanation as we go through this. So to get started, the general buildings and grounds budget for city hall, we've done a pretty good job in the non-personnel maintaining a zero percent increase for the operations and maintenance of the facility. Of the gas and electric utility, we decreased that line item by two thousand dollars, and that's basically because of need. If we don't need the cash, based on, on past history and forecasting, in this case, we cut it by two grand. The water and sewer utilities, we're increasing that by a thousand dollars, and that's typically, in this case, for the sewer rate increase that we just passed just a few short months ago. The stormwater utility, we're decreasing that by five hundred dollars. The outside services, we're increasing that by five hundred dollars based on need. And for the outside services, cleaning, the city hall cleaning contract, we're increasing that by three thousand seven hundred and fifty. And that accounts for the first time contractor increase since we started using Coverall. And the last big movement there would be the repair and maintenance services decreasing that by three thousand three oh one. Are there any questions on the city hall budget? Okay, moving on. We get into the core of the public works operations budget for public, public works administration. This is the engineering budget.
Page seventy-nine, thirty-one.
We are decreasing the outside services by two thousand dollars. That's the account that we, we use to cover any engineering expenses that is not related to a capital project. So if there's no need there, we're, we're reducing that. And if for some reason in 2026, you know, we see an increase in need, then we'll, we'll change that again for 27. The highway and street administration budget, there is no significant changes. The shop machinery and buildings budget, the gas and electric utilities, that is increasing by four thousand eight hundred dollars. gas and electric utilities, that is increasing by $4,800, and that's to account for the power increase from the removal of the solar panels that were removed earlier this year. Water and sewer utilities increases by $1,000, and again, mainly that's for the sewer rate increase. The garage material and supply account increases by $5,000, and that's based on need. The vehicle and equipment stock supply increases by $3,000. That vehicle and equipment stock supply account is for things like oil, spark plugs, tires, things of that nature for the city's fleet. Are there any questions on that budget? Okay. Moving on to the street maintenance and construction budget. Our other personnel services line item decreases by $1,700, and that's based on the program expenses. The street outside services, we've done, Mark has done some of his split for this one. An initial decrease of $14,000, but we created a streets sidewalk and repair account three rows down in your budget. This is the $10,000 that was moved over from the capital budget this year. So that will go towards any sidewalk panel replacement, curb repair, things like that. The median and terrace maintenance decreases by $800. Our street sweeping disposal account increases by $2,000 to account for the program disposal cost, and we split this 50/50 with the storm utility. The street equipment, maintenance, and repair account increases by $1,500, and that's based on a need. The fuels and additives, we're decreasing that by $3,000, and that's based on the 2026 forecast for fuel. Street supplies increases by $1,000. Our snow and ice supplies decreases by $6,000, and that's based on our current inventory and our expected purchase quantity for this year in 2026. And the last item here is the street sign repair and replacement account. We are increasing that by $2,000, and that's based on need. Any questions for that budget?
Teresa?
Director, can you explain, related to the fuels and additives, it just is kind of surprising that the forecast would be for a decrease.
This time last year, the forecast was obviously significantly higher. Fuel prices have been lower than what the forecasted price was, and going into 2026, the forecast remains favorable to our budget. So rather than keep that money in there, we're adjusting it accordingly based on our fuel consumption.
Got it.
I've used the same forecasting site pretty much every budget year, and I think we've been pretty close with it, so.
I just didn't know if it was because you were using less, or is it because the price of, you know, of the fuel was actually was-
No, this is, I believe, just strictly for price.
Yeah.
Because our city doesn't grow streetwise, you know, mileage-wise, our services are pretty static, so we have that going for us, and it helps us forecast more accurately, so, yeah.
Are you going to solid waste next, or where are you going?
I believe the road-related facilities would be next.
Sorry.
Page 83.
Page 83.
The only item there would be the traffic control maintenance. That's decreasing by $1,800 based on need. We contract with the City of Madison for the operations and maintenance of the traffic lights in Manona, and they also do, by contract, a few streetlight maintenance areas as well, but that's to the other account in this budget. My next budget would be the forestry budget. I believe that's page 90. Right-of-way tree removals, we are decreasing that by $2,000, and that is strictly related to prior years, the staff expense for ash tree removals. So seeing as though we're fairly caught up on removing ash trees, we're decreasing that line item. Tree removals and care increases by $7,000, and that's based on the demand for tree removals. This is basically our contracted account, and these are for the larger trees that we remove in the city. It typically requires working around power lines, which our contractor has certification and experience with, and they also have the proper equipment to deal with the larger trees and working around power lines. The other item there is the brush pickup. We're decreasing that by $6,581. In 2026, we're going to do the Christmas tree collection with public work staff. So you'll also see that decrease in the stormwater budget.
Dan, when you do the Christmas tree yourself, do you use your own chipper, or do you take the Christmas trees to a-
We'll probably use the grapple.
Okay.
We're, it's just a piece of equipment that picks it up, and we'll put them in the back of the truck or trailer.
Right.
These will most likely go out to Purple Cow.
Okay.
And then they'll just mix it in with their compost.
Got it.
Yeah.
I have a question. You have the tree removal, right-of-way tree removals in here, or tree removals in general. Does, do you have any line item in this budget or any of your other ones to, for new trees?
That's in the capital budget?
Yeah.
It's all capital?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was a recent switch I think we made.
No, that one-
Planting was capital, and removal was more maintenance.
I think that was in the parks budget for us. Tree planting has always been in the capital budget.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes?
Dan, I also had a question about the trees. Can you repeat again the difference between the removals of the right-of-way and the other tree removals?
I just combined them. That was a- Did I get the bottom number with the committee approval?
Yeah.
It's actually in the final budget?
I just combined the two. It just makes it easier for-
Oh, okay.
Just accounting purposes. It's a removal of a tree. I mean-
Whether it's in the right-of-way or not, it just doesn't matter.
It's just so you don't have to have two different codes.
So the-
Two feet in one way.
So the final budget will have them combined?
It should have, yeah. Is it not in that combined?
No.
It's not yet.
It's all broken up.
It's supposed to be broken. It's supposed to be combined. Mark, in the sheet, it's combined, but I believe in the narrative, it's not, so we can combine it.
Yeah, it was supposed to be combined.
No worries. Okay.
Any other questions about that? Okay.
Moving on to the solid waste disposal. I believe that's page 189.
That's 189.
This budget looks pretty good, and the action that we did last year at this time, where we reduced our collection of multifamily units from the eight units down to the four, we see quite a drop in our expense, and I'll get to that very soon. The recycling services increases by $2,029, and that's based on the contract price for 2,636 units. Our yard waste services increased significantly by $14,600, and that's based on a recent purchase of Royal Container by GFL. They immediately increased our price by over 50%. Since then, we've contracted with Pelletary. So as of right now, Pelletary is the company that pulls our dumpsters. They gave us a slightly better price than what GFL assigned to us. The refuse collection costs, we're decreasing that by $17,545. And this is what I was alluding to earlier with us reducing our service to eightplex units down to four. Our recycling and solid waste carts, we're increasing that by $500, and that will go towards the purchase of replacement lids and wheels for the carts.
Any questions on that? Yeah, Teresa?
Dan, I'm thinking some of these items under solid waste will perhaps go down in future years because of the purchase of the hook truck in the capital budget?
That will be in the yard waste disposal cost.
Not much, but a little bit, it'll go down.
The-
Yeah.
The goal here, if you look on the narrative, you see the dumpster hauling service for $26,500.
Right.
That would be what we would save once we obtain our own dumpsters.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thanks.
We would still have the disposal costs, though.
Yeah.
Anything else on this? Okay. Next up is utilities, and that would start, starting with the stormwater utility, and that starts at 192.
Okay. You'll see on this one, the non-personnel item grows by about 6%, and perhaps Mark can add more to this, but you see the main driver there is the expense related to the interest payment. Otherwise, we've done pretty good with our individual line items. The vehicle maintenance and repair account decreases by $1,500, and that's based on need. The GIS mapping program, we've had some changes there. The finance director pulled the GIS part-time wages out of that and created a line near the top of the budget. So the $4,300 that remains in the line is related to the GPS equipment, the software fees, and what we have called as dashboard updates on the GIS layer. Those are specific individual dashboards related to the stormwater layers, and we have it for the sewer layers and the water layers as well. So you'll see that $4,300 in each of the three utility budgets. The street sweeping disposal, this increases by $1,500 for program disposal costs, and again, this was split with the street maintenance. And for brush pickup, you see the other half of that decrease of $6,581 for the Christmas tree collection.
So the Christmas tree collection is in two budgets because it's split 50/50?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Any questions on that? Okay. Next up is obviously the water utility is next up on the budget forms as well. Utilities go from 192 to 208.
Okay. Diving into the pumping expense for power purchase, we are planning for an $8,000 increase, and that's based on the expected 7.2% combined increase from MGE. The water treatment expense for maintenance of water treatment equipment decreases by $1,000, and that's based on need. Maintenance of meters, this was an area that was divvied up between the sewer utility budget. I believe the finance director transferred half of our costs for the meter annual software and fees. It was split. We have $8,750 in the water utility under maintenance of meters. Under the administration and general expense, we have an increase of $16,000. This is a one-time increase. It's based on the five-year recertification requirement from the EPA for the updates to the utility risk and resilience assessment plan and the emergency response plan. These recertifications are good for five years, so in five years, we'll be back seeking a one-time increase to complete the recertification at that time. This should be good until 2031.
And Dan, we're sure that that's still a requirement of the EPA, since we know quite a bit of the EPA has been-
I haven't learned anything.
Regulations have changed and, you know, they've cut back, but you still see that. That's still a requirement.
I did receive email notification this past summer, so-
Okay.
Because it's, as far as I know, it's a rule, and I guess we follow it until we know more.
I do think, Mayor, a lot of that sort of technical work is still contracted out, so those, a lot of those contracted agencies represented are still functioning despite the random efforts of the rest of the federal government.
Yeah, well, I wasn't suggesting that they wouldn't function if they, or that the EPA wouldn't function, but just that I know they've tried to cut back on a lot of regulations, so I don't know.
I mean, if for some reason they abandoned that program, then we just don't spend the money.
Sure.
So, okay. The GIS mapping program, this, like, up in the stormwater utility, three grand was moved to the part-time wages line item, and here again, the $4,300 is for the GPS equipment, software, and dashboard fees. That would be it for the water utility. Is there any questions on that budget?
Questions?
Okay.
Seeing none? Go ahead. We'll now answer it.
Okay. The last budget, the, for the sanitary sewer, page 208, I believe. Now, the biggest one here is always the biggest one. It's the disposal and treatment charges for MMSD. We are planning for an 8% rate increase, and that would be about $95,000 for our program. The maintenance of mains and laterals, the outside services budget increases by $7,000 for the 2026 contracted pricing for the cleaning and televising of sewer mains. Not on your sheet is the other half of that meters software split of $8,750. Again, this is on the billing side of things for the water meter software fees, because there's water and sewer charges on that bill. And then the last one, under the GIS mapping program, this was split again, $3,000 to the part-time wages and $4,300 for the GPS equipment and software fees.
Okay. Any questions? Other questions for Dan? Doug?
I have a comment, actually. Just that $95,000 increase floors me. It's actually, the allowable increase that we could have this year on the levy is like $104,000.
Right.
This is like within $10,000 of what we're allowed to, for one thing, that we don't have any control over, so.
And we have budgeted, Mark, this is where we budgeted the 8%, but the letter they've given us said they'll go, what, 8% to 16%?
Yeah.
The max, I think, was actually what you did.
Yeah, so it's frustrating, to say the least, so.
Yeah.
And we, I think, between Mark and I, we've typically budgeted about 8% every year just because we don't know which way they're going to go and where that number's going to land.
Well, it used to go as a hard number, actual number. Now, some people are buying a little bit, so now they're in a range, a low and high range. So it used to be a straight number, oh, it should be, that's not.
Right. Good. Great. Painless.
If you, if anyone has any questions after tonight, please send in an email, and I can get you an answer. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that takes us to legislative, judicial, legal. I believe that takes us to legislative, judicial, legal, which would be page twenty-four.
I would go ahead, the judge is here, look at her floor, just to see if she made the effort to come in and turn it over to her.
Come on down. Welcome, Judge.
Thank you. How you all doing?
Good.
Perfect. Do you want me to jump in?
Yeah.
Get my letter?
Yeah.
Yes.
First, I'll put it on the record, I am a terrible speller, but I do know the difference between counsel, as in lawyer, and counsel, as in what you are all sitting on. So, please apologize. That's my apology for my typo right off of that thing. Well, as you know, I am still really new to this process. I know last year, I had a brief conversation with Mark and Leah about budget stuff, and then when it came up again this year, I met again with Neil this time, so thank you for those invitations. Otherwise, this stuff would just not be on my radar. But I do think that it's important for me to know what's happening and to let you know what's happening. So, I have had a good opportunity to learn some things yet again this year. As I outlined in my letter, the only, you know, the major expense that I see is the staff person, the clerk, who keeps things running, who is at City Hall and answering questions as people come in, taking payments, here with me in court. And I came into a well-oiled machine. I don't know how many of you knew Elliot, who was my prior clerk. He was fantastic. He just was, taught me how to do my job. And also, as I outlined in the letter, was doing part-time deputy clerk stuff as well. And we just never had a sense, and I know Leah had asked him that too, you know, in her position, like, what kind of time are you doing here or there? So, I just felt like I grossly underestimated what the clerk has to do. So, the new clerk, Seth Jovag, luckily, has been a real good sport about it because there was probably some false representation at the job interview suggesting that this would be a twenty-hour-a-week position. And it hasn't turned out to be that, as I outlined, that is likely going to, his hours will likely reduce over time as he gets going, as he learns the ropes. But when I had a discussion with him about it this week, he said, well, and again, we hired him at twenty hours, and like, if this turns into something different, are you going to keep this job? Because I don't want to start over again, and none of us want to start over again. That's an expensive prospect for the city. So, he's certainly not interested in thirty hours or anything like that. He's like, I'm just hoping when I get there, I'll be able to do it at twenty-five. So, I did send a follow-up email with the numbers provided by Mark, what that would do to the budget, what those numbers would look like. I was not aware about the requirement to offer Wisconsin retirement benefits over the twenty-three hour mark. So, I'm glad I asked this question because I think we might unwittingly have just ended up there. But now, it's something that I'm aware of, and Seth can be aware of. But, so I don't have the answer. It's, I'm coming to you guys, but I just wanted you to have the information and know that. And I certainly wanted to advocate for more than twenty hours a week to be budgeted because I just didn't know. And as I said, historically, it was a full-time job. Saw that change, but again, when jobs are intertwined with one another, there was no record keeping for, you know, this, these are the hours I'm keeping on this job. It's just like, well, the phone rang in the middle of that job, so I took over the other job. So, like I said, I wanted to let you guys know. I don't even know, I don't know what the process is here. I don't know what you need from me or what I need from you, other than to know, I don't want the plug pulled on my clerk.
Great. Neil, do you want to?
Just certainly, it was a great meeting with Judge, appreciated her taking time to come in and talk about this. Kind of realized, like, new clerk and new judge, maybe she wants to come in and talk about it. So, we were very appreciative of her coming in and doing that. You know, certainly, best efforts were made, I think, in terms of when this was first set up. I think ideally, we first just for some very brief history, certainly set it up with the intention of keeping the position structured the way it was. Found out that that's a unique skill set combination, and it was going to be really, really difficult to hire somebody who could do both positions. But I think it would certainly, Judge Kirby, if I misspeak on anything, certainly felt that it was more important to get someone in for the court clerk part of the position as quickly as possible. So, that's why it evolved into breaking that out as the part-time position standalone. And then the city basically came in, and we did a budget amendment to get a full-time person backed up on the front as the utility clerk and the deputy clerk position. So, a couple of bumps. Elliot and we did some good training with the first candidate, and Elliot was here for two weeks to pay two staff to do some training and try to get things up to speed. That was working out really, really good, and it wasn't working out really good. It was for personal reasons, that person wasn't able to maintain the position, so we were back to the drawing board again. And so, as we got into that, so there were certainly some hiccups in terms of doing that. I think in terms of our current clerk is doing, like I said, doing a lot of training this year, a lot of education on how to do the job. So, certainly, there's been some, been a little bit of a learning curve or a learning cliff. He makes, he has spent a lot of effort trying to kind of just really getting up onto the position. And so, looking at those things, there's also been some unusual, the actual judicial activity has been a little unusual this year in terms of the amount of resources being required by a couple of those cases. So, those things being considered, we also looked at the year-to-date, while it's certainly going to be a little bit over, it was not going to be over to the extent we were concerned with at this time. So, kind of certainly, understanding that we're certainly covering this year, and you know, Mark is aware of it, and we're looking at if the salary does go over, there were certainly clear, clear reasons why that was going to be the case for this year. So, that being said, I think kind of eyes wide open going into next year, assuming there might be some additional efficiencies picked up by that, you know, by the position, just knowing the position and kind of everybody kind of hitting their groove a little bit on this. Certainly, at this point, from at least from my standpoint, I think there's no harm in leaving the position where it's budgeted right now, but certainly continuing to evaluate it and kind of communicate on it throughout the year next year without just simply waiting till budget time to decide whether or not we did it right or not. So, kind of maybe having a little bit more of a regular conversation, either on a monthly or quarterly basis with the judge and with Seth, just to kind of keep an eye on those things to make sure it's, what we think is going to happen is actually happening. Either way, either it's like, yeah, actually, the demand is staying higher than we thought it was, or actually, no, it's actually settling down. So, I think in terms of overall impact right now, we think, you know, my recommendation would be just to leave it where it's at, continue to evaluate it, but with the eyes wide open, that if there's clear evidence that we may need to amend this, there may be a budget amendment or process being brought forward next year.
And I would just say that that recommendation was in discussion with the mayor because he and I have talked about it prior to tonight, and we concur that rather than increase it, because there were a variety of circumstances that contributed to, you know, contributed to what looked like an increase this year. And we thought, you know, we thought it would be better to keep an eye on it, as Neil said. And, you know, obviously, we're not going to be kicking your clerk out of the office if he's done his twenty hours, if he, you know. But we don't see a need to necessarily increase it in the budget line item, knowing that... And certainly, we wouldn't be looking to increase it to kick in retirement benefits and other things either because that's certainly not the intent of this position. So, that would be our recommendation.
Yeah, we certainly didn't want to be in a position where we didn't want to feel like the judge were penalizing staff or Seth for, you know, just trying to do the job that they have in front of them. But I just think it's only we have the ability to just wait and see how it goes for right now, and then see if it looks like what they had during the first quarter and the second quarter. Yeah, hours demand are higher than we thought it was going to be. We need to bring something back and get that remedy going forward, so.
Sure, and I am, you know, uncertain how budget adjustments work, so I just didn't know the feasibility of that. I certainly know, as a general rule, it's easier to keep money than get money back as far as budgets go in general. And just to be clear, it's not, I mean, it's not an increase in a budget item compared to any of the prior years because it's been a full-time, including last year, which was interesting because I remember that we'd had a meeting about it, and I was saying that the full salary was coming from judicial, but clearly Elliot was working both. So, and then, of course, the other thing that I outlined in the letter were the outside services that I just felt was too low, and then just wanting to flag the issue about security going forward.
Sure.
Good. And just a couple on those things. Certainly, on the outside services, again, the amount we'd be looking at would be five hundred, doubling that line item maybe depending on, certainly with the language services and other things. This year, we're experiencing it because Judge had to recuse herself, so we had to have another judge come in and cover a case, so there was some cost there that weren't anticipated. I think generally speaking, we know that there are going to be some years where that number's going to be a little high, and other years where it won't be, it'll average itself out a little bit. So, again, if the need is there, the need is there, I think we just address it at the time if we need to do that. We're not talking significant dollar figures, certainly for that particular line item. And I think, just in response to the security concerns, I think there are some things we can probably do in terms of, you know, possibly with our in-house to improve the situation a little bit, in terms of evaluating some other things with our police department. So, we're certainly pledging to work with the judge on doing that.
Again, he and I have talked about it, and we concur that we think that there's some things that we can do, so.
Great. I'm looking forward to hearing that.
Yeah.
Anyone else have any questions?
Just one thing, because you asked about how the budget works. So, the mayor proposes the budget, this is her budget, and any amendments that you're talking about have to come from one of the alders? Would have to propose that, that's where it would come, could come from staff. I mean, the mayor could propose it, but that rarely ever happens because it's the mayor's budget currently. So, it would have to come from one of the six alders.
Okay. Any questions yet, Doug?
So, is the thirty-seven, five, nine, six, that includes the judge's salary and also the part-time clerk?
Correct. It's the twenty hours for the part-time clerk and the judge's salary. That's what's included in there.
How much is the judge's salary?
Ten thousand.
It's not a lot.
Seven hundred and fifty a month shows up in my bank account.
Yeah, something like that. I mean, I could get it for you, I don't know exactly. I have the numbers in the office.
So, what are we able to pay, offer, when we, like, the last time we interviewed for that, what was the pay that you were able to offer?
Find that here.
So, we have, we have to look and see what we have on that one. For sure. I'm sure what we advertised today.
I have the breakdown.
Email that says employment offer was not attached.
Useful judge is nine thousand and seven dollars, according to the justification.
What's that?
It's nine thousand and seven dollars, the useful.
For the judge, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We can certainly find that out.
We can verify.
We can find that out between, right? Well, just to follow up on Doug Woods' question, we can find out the actual hourly rate of the clerk between now and the next meeting.
Absolutely. It'll be good up tomorrow morning.
Right. Right. I mean, it's easy to follow up on, we're only on First Read tonight.
Then also, we'll...
Not even, just commit the whole.
Right.
Well, also, for the budget amendment, just a reminder too, of what we had to do to the full-time, to maintain the full-time, to have the coverage for front office staff too.
Right.
Because that was part of this whole work. It wasn't just the judge position, it was moving that, we're moving two part-time clerks to one full-time to have the coverage we needed at City Hall.
Sure it is. When we, I have an email from Leah in July that says when we hired Hillary, so that's the person between, we posted the part-time position at twenty-six fifty an hour and the full-time position at fifty-five thousand salary. So, of course, there's other costs, but... So, I think, I'm pretty sure twenty-six fifty is what we're doing hourly.
So, what it sounds like, if the twenty-three hours a week is a threshold for having to pay WRS and health insurance, is that what I'm hearing?
Health insurance is higher. WRS is twenty-three.
Yeah, so it's twelve hundred hours for WRS, so it's right around twenty-three, give or take a little bit. For ACA, it's thirty hours a week. Right now, we don't offer permanent part-time, unless you're permanent part-time, the city doesn't partner the policies, they don't offer health insurance, so, but they would get, because of the ACA, they wouldn't get qualified for the...
Or if we went over twenty-three, we'd have to pay WRS.
Yeah, that automatically, yeah.
Unless we're, if we're going to do that, we want to make sure we're doing it with our eyes wide open, so.
Right.
Otherwise, we can't really go over twenty-three.
And if I understood from Leah correctly, it's actually, it's a year, it's a year back, it's a moving year. So, it's not just a calendar year, it's always twelve months at any particular point. If the average hits that number, then it would trigger that in. So, it is a situation where you do have to manage the hours.
It is, because once you hit it once, it doesn't matter.
Right.
Then you could work eight hundred hours and still qualify for it.
Okay. Thanks.
Great. Well, I'm glad I learned about that. This has been really helpful, so thank you.
Well, thank you, Judge.
Well, thank you for coming in.
Security stuff too, so.
Yeah.
I know where your guy is, so he's right, so we'll hook up our next meeting.
So, again, we'll confirm between now and Monday's meeting on those figures. That's helpful. Anything else?
We did a spreadsheet already, we can send out.
Yeah. And I forwarded your email with the numbers.
Thank you for coming in, Judge.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Good luck, Jane.
That takes us to executive office, so that would be page twenty-nine.
If you want to go back to twenty-four, the legislative one, just hit a...
Go back to legislative, sorry.
Yeah.
Apologies, go back to twenty-four if you would, to do legislative and legal.
Yeah, just ahead of that, as you notice, we're going through the council right now, the approval of the salary increases. So, the last year's 2025 budget, at the time, the Mayor O'Connor's goal was to do an increase too. Nancy's carrying that on. So, the budget number hasn't changed because it's already included actually in the budget. That's why you'll see like, well, we're going to do this increase, why isn't it increasing? It's just, it's already been included.
Alder Bernstein had a great question last meeting, or he asked me, says, hey, if we've got that, and we're only doing half of them at one time, why do we need to fill them out in there? Actually, because it is technically possible that either through retirements, someone falling off, those other three alders technically still could be taking office, and so we kind of leave the budget in there as a whole item, so it's there in case we need it. Essentially, because it's there, doesn't mean we have to spend it. If it's not there, it'll simply roll over to the next year.
And that's probably why I put it in there like that, just because it's going to happen instead of building up and just do it one time.
Yeah.
So, there's no...
Well, it was a good question, and he's absolutely correct in terms of the timing, so.
But most likely, we would only use half that amount.
Correct.
Okay, yeah.
Half of the increase. Just half of the increase.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Anything else you want to say about this, Mark?
Just the only thing, we did increase professional development from five fifty to one thousand, so. As for alders, for your use, if you, there are seminars, conferences, something someone is interested in, usually run those by, made it an unofficial policy to the council president to get his blessing if he's, someone has something he's interested in, so. And Alder Radamacher did take advantage of that, I think, on the lead budget.
It may have.
So, yeah. So, it just, that is there, so encourage you to take advantage of it if you want, so.
It gets run through the council president?
I, before I just blindly shoot a council number who sent me a note, I do, I did check, I do ensure that, in case there's multiple requests. We haven't had that before, but I did say, well, it was important, I just, not randomly, just approved that without...
Well, I agree, I agree, but I'm just saying... Well, I agree, I agree. But I'm just saying, I don't, I didn't know that we have a policy that goes to Doug or goes to the mayor, who it goes to.
It's not an official policy. That was a decision that I thought would be appropriate, rather than just let people spend money without any.
No, I agree. I agree. Yeah. But if we, I guess my point is if we need a policy in terms of who gets to approve that, since we're increasing the line item, certainly happy to look at that another time.
So I just do the, the legal costs, since we're already on that page.
Yes.
Again, so the court, essentially, the court cost for a municipal court is remaining the same. Legal retainer for other city work is essentially slightly, slightly increased over the twenty-five budget, but just by a little less than two thousand dollars. And then the non-legal retainers for things that aren't scheduled that need to come up on occasion. There are a significant number of those charges that do get charged to TIFs, for example, for like development agreements and so forth. Those, that, that costs of, when we have Attorney Cole do work on those types of things, those get allocated to the appropriate TIF district, not this budget. So we actually do have the ability to move some of those costs.
So like the tax disputes we have with Walmart, does it come out of the legal non-retainer?
Well, it's probably.
Yes and no.
Yeah, it could be.
Actual time that our attorney works on it, yes. Sometimes we have to hire like an outside. It's, sometimes outside services basically relate. They, they'll charge us back like a, an expert witness or something to that effect. Sometimes we just put it to the non-retainer account.
So there's another account?
No, we'll put it to that non-retainer account.
One of those two alder, yeah.
Yeah. Always a situation when we have, a lot of the prior ones have been also, we have Citmec is our other, the insurance company. A lot of times, they'll take over a case where our, like Bill Cole's not involved in it. That, that time would be charged there. So it's not at the time. It's Citmec. Like years ago, we had some police things. That was coming out of that account in the prior years.
Other questions about legal? Okay.
Okay. We'll go on to the executive budget.
Which is on page twenty-nine.
Not a significant number of changes here, but I'll go through these here real quick. Obviously, personnel ones are how they're allocated there. Professional development was reduced slightly. And then we renominated the potential conference there, just to keep it on there, to help out with some of the other increases within the line item. Leah had mentioned that the software budget or the IT budget for the newsletter expense has been moved over to that, that, because that's a civic plus expense. League of Municipalities is our actual amount for this year. The actual dues for twenty-twenty-six for the Dade County Cities and Villages is actually thirty-four fifteen. Mark, we just got that today. So that came in this afternoon. So we'll let them, we'll move from one item there to make, to balance that out. Two significant reductions were the vehicle maintenance and repair and the fuels and additives simply primarily, so I personally don't use that vehicle. So in terms of the number used, so other staff does occasionally use it. But we've been underspending on those lines pretty regularly. So kind of reduce those, both of those line items based on the usage. I think we have the, the executive office other, just have a kind of a catch-all series, a series of different expenses in that line item. So then just to kind of cover some general costs, you know, probably looking at, at either, have discussed with the mayor, probably not this, not this year, but maybe next year, depending on how we revise the volunteer awards or the recognition for maybe setting up a separate line for that item, or we may just leave it in this item as it is. Memorial Day Parade is actually not really, there's not really an expense there anymore, because at least lately, because we've been funding that with our, with tourism funds. So any expenses we've had there is really not in that one. So it is a miscellaneous general expense. A lot of times, I think even, I think that might be where the food came out of tonight, for tonight's meeting, comes out of this line. So it is a little bit of a catch-all there. Sustainability, we're retaining the, the two thousand dollars in there for, just for public education and any programming efforts that sustainability wishes to do. And then codification, we're going to leave it, we're leaving it four thousand dollars because we have had a significant number of codification requirements and updates with our ordinances last year. We're anticipating that continuing still this year as we continue to make updates and refining that. There's formal legal process they have to do to incorporate those amended changes into our ordinance and then make those publicly available and posted and so forth. So that is those costs related to those items.
Questions about executive office? Teresa?
Yeah, I was kind of curious about the codification. So is this an outside organization that is hired to?
It is. It is a contractor. Eco three sixty is actually our, our entity that does.
Eco three sixty. Thank you.
Just one little thing. This is an interesting thing to me. If you look at vehicle maintenance repairs, two thousand twenty-four, you almost spent two thousand dollars on repairs because, I don't know if you noticed, we park all those vehicles outside. It was either a mouse or a squirrel got into it and chewed through all the fuel line. That's what that repairs. So it wasn't from driving, it was just from sitting.
Just from sitting there, right.
And we chewed right through it.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, Leah uses that vehicle for elections and that's like about it.
That's probably a heavy student. It does get, usually at a conference or someone may take, it is fairly lightly used, so.
Yep. Yeah, Doug.
I noticed that we've got the league dues and the DC CVA dues in here.
Yes, sir.
Somewhere I know in the budget, we have the MPO dues.
Yes.
But not here.
No, that's to the Public Works Department.
Okay. That's good. I just want to make sure it's still in.
Forty-one hundred, yeah.
Okay.
Chairman protecting his own. Good man, so.
Yeah.
If we're going to ask, we've asked everybody to contribute, so it wouldn't look too good for us.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, I'm impressed. Yeah. Any, any other questions?
Hold on.
It was more regarding the vehicle that is just sitting there collecting dust that we should sell it?
Well, we have several vehicles and that's, yeah, that may be discussion, obviously, another time.
Or maybe it can be driven to job sites, like.
Right.
That one.
We don't have job sites that people are actually driving onto very often, so.
Right. This discussion.
Another discussion for another day.
Another time, yeah. Okay. Any other questions on executive? And that being the case, we'll go to number forty-seven, page number forty-seven for assessment.
Number seven, this is essentially just our, our contracted amount for accurate appraisal. So this includes the contract amount plus an estimate, kind of a little bit of a projected amount for covering the cost of inspections.
And just a little follow-up on that. I believe so far, it's been what, I mean, about fifty percent of what Meska, it's about fifty percent?
Fifty percent.
For walkthroughs this year?
They were estimating about fifty percent of the letters they sent out for a third of the city to have responded and get a walkthrough this year. But I haven't gotten any final updates on that yet.
But that's better than I think we thought we were going to do. Hopefully that holds true, so.
We're trying.
Half of the people are allowing the inspector into their house.
Yep. Okay. Which has been historically our average, so we're right on track.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions about assessments? If not, we'll move to tourism, which is page one sixty.
Yep. The, this is essentially, the city has its own tourism commission. Essentially, according to state law, we, the collective room tax is divided seventy percent to the tourism commission and thirty percent goes to the general fund. That is by state statute. So essentially, that is the breakdown. You see, in the past, there has been a bit of a fund balance that's been available for those items. This last, this last year, that was largely expended. So essentially, we're on, so the, the way essentially, Mark has originally set this up and is probably good, good thing that he's done it this way, is essentially the collected dollars that were, dollars collected here in twenty-twenty-five essentially established the budget for twenty-twenty-six. So by the time we are there into twenty-six, we know exactly how much money we have available for, for expenditures. So that, that is in terms of the basic, you know, approval of this is essentially, you know, that allocation, the actual commission does go through and essentially decides how to allocate that seventy percent in terms of a percentage allocated to a certified tourism entity, which right now is, is Mesba, has a, has a contract with the city to do a lot of that. And then the remaining balance of those funds goes towards funding direct, specific grants towards specific events. For usually, what usually marketing hotels is part of their events is usually what the grants are for. That's a very high-level overview of a very complicated thing, so.
So Mark, the, the twenty-six budget that we've got here, five eighty, how quickly does the state, you know, get, get you the revenues from twenty-five? Because that's where our.
Oh, we collect the money. The state doesn't give it to us.
Oh, okay.
So we have to send a report into the, every community that has room tax. There's a requirement that's, you have to send a report into the state. I think it's due May first or April, it's one of those dates. We have to show the split in that way. So, but we collect the money and we have to honor the system of that seventy-thirty split.
So are you saying that our account has already been replenished for, by, or does it get replenished at the beginning of January from the elections or when is it?
Oh, yeah. So the last time, so the fourth quarter is due January thirty-first. So we have the first three quarters already in. The fourth quarter will be in January thirty-first. The majority didn't pay early. So we'll have a good idea if my, if the estimate is correct or not. It's, I mean, right now, we're right on track for it, so.
Okay.
So we actually have three, I mean, we still have, we have money collected already.
And the first grant cycle's generally been the second or third week in January, with the first commission meeting to review those applications the following week.
Right.
So it lines up generally pretty well.
Let me make sure you have the exact number.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, Doug?
Yeah, I just, I want to rant for a second, but not very long. Just to be, so everybody's clear what's happening with this. We're collecting five hundred and eighty thousand is what the budget is in room tax. And we only get to keep a hundred and seventy-four thousand for general property tax to the general fund. The other four oh six has to be spent on this tourism commission stuff. And, you know, some of them are very, I mean, all of it, I think, is the things that have gotten money are worthy projects. I'm not sure that if we were, if we had to budget them out of, you know, the general property tax revenue, I'm not sure that we would pay thirty thousand dollars to put on a marathon.
Mm-hmm.
No. But this is what the state legislature has stuck us with. I mean, it used to be we got, we would get that entire five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. It didn't used to be nearly, nearly that much, I don't think, but.
No.
But I assume that's hotel prices have gone up. But really, it's a, if the state legislature wants to do something for property tax relief, it would be change this provision because this is, I mean, four hundred thousand dollars to a city our size, that's a lot of money. So, end of rant.
For what it's worth, it is something that is on my list to talk to our senator about, who also happens to be running for governor. So, and I know that the Dems just put together a local, they put together a package of legislative reforms, Democrats at the State House, within the last four days. They just put together a package that included some affordable housing and a variety of other things. It did include this, but I'm going to talk to her about it because I agree. Yeah.
Alder Wood, I'm really glad you brought that up because I just remember feeling almost sick to my stomach being on the tourism commission when, you know, worthy, worthy events, but I'm remembering an event at the high school, you know, and thirty thousand dollars. And it's not that it's not a great event, but the message that it sends and then the ripples with the parents in the school district, the city just gave us thirty thousand dollars, you know, and then they raised our taxes.
Right.
It's, people don't understand that we have no choice. It's just silly.
And then there are events in this, you know, since you started the rant, we can all, I guess we can all want to jump in, but, but the other piece of it is, is that we do events, Parks and Rec, those events, as a perfect example.
Right.
Right? Like our Fall Festival and like our other, the major events that we do at Parks and Rec, where they can't tap into it because they don't put heads in beds.
Right.
Right? So, so because it's specifically tied to the room tax and, and so, so those events that might even qualify that are our events, I understand the notion of like not paying ourselves. On the other hand, that means that those events like the Parks and Rec do and other departments do.
Hmm.
National Night Out.
Strange.
No, I mean, any number of events like that that we can't, you know, get support for.
I think Alder Wood, also hit it on the head. It's like, well, you know, the response from some, some individuals out there in the state will be like, well, you don't have to charge the room tax.
Right.
But then we'd be giving up the hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. We'd be still losing out on, so.
Right.
It's, it's, it's not a good system from, from municipal standpoint. It does not lend itself to, you know, maybe there's ways of, you know, just throwing ideas out there, Mayor, for maybe for communities where net new construction's below two percent, we get to keep all this money. Maybe just don't give us a blank, you know, blank check. But if, if there are other tax revenue limitations that a community is facing, and that's a state-defined issue, maybe they could give us relief or a higher percentage or something to make up for some of those types of things. But it is, it is, it is a difficult situation and in terms of, you know, even when we're, I know when the commission's reviewing these applications, I mean, it's, these are, these are great community organizations. You know, we're doing our best to target the funds towards advertising the hotels to keep us consistent with, and with state statute. But, you know, there are, you know, there are always challenges with this. And now that that fund balance is gone, the amounts that were funded last year were not, will not be available this year. I mean, everyone will have to take significant reduction, if, assuming all those same folks come back and apply again for this year. But if that, if we could get a couple new applications or we have, you know, certainly this year, we have the, we have the Harry White Horse Festival. So there'll be a larger event that we'll want to make some, probably, that is a multiple-day event that very clearly meets the rules of multiple days, generating overnight stays because of its multiple-day event. A little bit easier case to make, so they'll probably going to want to make some investments there. So the commission's going to have some tough decisions to make in terms of, of how they, they break up that, that four hundred and six thousand dollars, I think.
Okay. Rant's over. Thank you, Doug. That takes us to tourism and that takes us to number seven, starting with finance, and that begins on page thirty-three.
Yeah. Page thirty-three is just finance. Just had an overall three percent increase. Just a lot, adds in, just a little increases. Audit increased by a little bit, so did service contracts and other supplies and expenses, as long as the wages too. Any questions? It's right at the three point zero zero percent.
Any questions about finance?
If we could skip transit and parking and code general government.
Okay.
That one first.
What page?
It's fifty-two is what hit that one.
Fifty-two.
So this is kind of the big one. I wanted to make sure to explain a little bit. It says impact. Other financing uses, well, there's firstly, legal taxes and uncollectibles at twenty thousand. This is where, if you have a situation where those assessment issues, where we have to pay, we have to, say Walmart was their case, we got to pay, or Walgreens, this is where that money would come up. We budget a little bit for that. And also, we also, personal property tax, you no longer have personal property tax. A lot of those are not collectible. Businesses have clothes unable to collect, we would write them off here. So that's where that goes. Eventually, this is going to go away in a couple of years once we run through all the old uncollectibles for personal property. Underneath that is the other financing uses. I want to talk about two bigger things here. One, at the very bottom, transfer to debt service. So we kind of talked about why is our expenses down? When you look at last year's general fund compared to this, this year's, well, this number right here, six hundred and fifty-four thousand, we transferred that over to reduce our property taxes on the debt service side. This year, we did not include that. So that's one of the changes. And then contingency, this is where we talked about how we can stretch our money out. This is where that extra fund, referendum money goes. And we're reducing it down each year about two hundred and seventeen thousand. year about 217,000. Um, so next year, this number will be reduced by 217,000. Um, I think it's something we need to think about, I mean, Nancy talked about, you know, next year we'll receive expenditure restraint money, um, was, should, the bloom will come in and some other projects, BESA. Um, so we should have a good, uh, net new construction number. It's one of those things that we need to look at, and it's more when we do the next year's budget, Nancy, is do we wanna save some of that money, stretch out that referendum money as far as we can? So that's a thing we'll have to, more or less, when we go through it next year. Um, are we, you know, okay with the net new construction and additional 150,000 for expenditure restraint? Do we even need to use all that refer mon, referendum money and stretch that out? So this is where that, people ask, where's that stretched out? This is where it's at, right here. So I just wanna hit on that. That's all I have.
Okay.
One or maybe two questions. So the transfer to debt service, that's from the capital surplus, capital?
No, that was just from the, winds up being basically coming out of the general fund, so that's, that's coming out of the general fund.
Okay. And then the, just to be clear, the contingency fund here is completely separate from the general fund surplus?
Yeah, I kinda keep, we keep that kinda separated.
Yeah, cause we said we would keep it separate.
Yeah.
Yeah. We have to keep it separate, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, do you wanna go to transit or Parkland?
Hang on, can I follow up on Doug's question? Um, the excess in our fund balance, if we wanted to allocate that to capital debt service, would it be done here or would it be done elsewhere?
Uh, if you wanna use that excess, you would do it, we do like a two-part thing, you would do like a transfer to the debt service, is how it gets allocated over there. So you can do it. Um, so if you wanna allocate, that's what we kinda did last year, cause that's why that number's there, 654.
It's better to do it here than?
Better to do it here, showing it being transferred over.
Okay.
It's just a better tracking system.
So I have a question about that, actually, um, cause we said we're at twenty.
Roughly twenty-seven percent.
Twenty-seven percent. Um, I mean, I, I think Doug, last night, I think you said something about we have a 20% requirement, and I guess what I would say, I think we had a 20% floor, is what we've always said.
Fifteen percent floor.
Fifteen, it's fifteen to twenty percent. Policy's fifteen.
Is the range, yep.
Well, I thought we've always been over twenty.
We have.
I think we have, but technically it is.
The actual, the actual, the policy is fifteen to twenty.
When S and P or Moody's, which are the bond rating companies.
Okay, I thought we had bumped it up to a 20% floor because we've always been over twenty, and that's so, I apologize for that. Um, all right, then I withdraw my, my question except for to say that, you know, um, I, I wouldn't, for me personally, I don't, I don't know that I would wanna utilize all of it and go down to 20% because.
Right.
Again, we're, we're playing, just a reminder.
Yeah.
Among other things that we, you know, we decided in passing, bumping a few things like the loader and a few other things in capital, not to mention the fact that we had more, more water main breaks than we expected last winter. I mean, there's always things that come along, right? That we don't expect, um, uh, that, that, and, um, so having a little extra in the fund balance is not a bad thing. I think we've always erred on the side of that, but, um.
It'd be a great problem to have, Mayor, if we were in year five of the referendum, we thought, oh, maybe we can go another year.
Yeah.
It would be a great problem to have.
If we could go another year.
To have to make that decision, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Guarantee that.
Yeah.
I just had a question about the line, about the transfer to debt service. So Mark, where do I find that? So on page one six six.
Page, this is page fifty-two.
Fifty-two?
Right.
Transfer to zero right now.
Be the revenue account.
Oh, I'm sorry, I.
I was asking hypothetically, given the conversation that we had about our fund balance being above our.
Therefore, should we transfer more?
And there was, Doug's question the other day prompted the likelihood of amendment to do some of that, and I was just asking where it would happen then.
So if you look at page, if you look, just look at last year's, for example, that six five four, if you go page one sixty-six.
One sixty-six, okay.
Uh, you can see under, under revenues for the debt service, you'll see under the budget, you'll see, second to last line item, the revenues, you'll see the six fifty-four, so.
Transfer to some general fund.
Yeah, so it's, transfers out and transfers in. That's how it's shown.
Right, okay.
Copy purposes, that's how it's been shown.
But there's a lot of room between what it is right now and 20%. So even if we didn't, you know, if we used just part of it, we could still be buying down that, the debt service levy.
Sure. And I might, I wasn't suggesting that we couldn't use part of it, I just didn't wanna go all the way down to, you know, minimum or what we've sort of, yeah.
You're saying you don't wanna go down all the way to 20?
Yeah, I mean, cause I actually think fifteen.
Too low?
Is, is, I think it is too low. I mean, at least, at least I have always understood that reserves should always be, you know, assuming that like everything stops or, you know, hell breaks loose or however you wanna say it, that you have like a minimum of three months.
Yeah.
The three to six months of operating.
Yeah.
Muddies, you know, uh, banks, and so, I mean, at least that's my, always been my understanding, and I know it's a little bit different in our scenario.
Well, I know, Doug knows, when I first started here, they had the fund balance was down to like, or the school district, we're down like four or five percent. I don't remember how low it was.
I thought it was seven, but some, yeah.
Seven, yeah, something like seven.
When Rob Call was elected, that's where, that's where it was, and that's, so, when we set the fifteen to 20% policy, that was like aspirational.
Right. Right, right.
And the councils did it, so.
Yeah, yeah.
And Mark, if I'm wrong, didn't our bond council last time, the early auditors said this, oh, we'd like to see 25 to 30? My God, that's a little crazy. I mean, in terms of, you have to tax a levy for that, it's like, that's a little, that's a little high.
Bond councils is always gonna say that.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm sure they'd love the, I mean, yeah, sure, you're gonna hire a reading, have more money just sitting around, and I, I understand the logic, but I think, you know, I think our current range is, is probably an appropriate level, is what I would think.
Two little quick things, before, Parkland Fund, uh, one eighty-eight. So right now there's little activity, just so you know, probably should be part, maybe like part of that's the capital budget, but, um, so money in lieu of dedication, that's your Parkland fees, so, um, there probably should be revenues probably for next year, don't know what they are yet, but if you look at twenty-three and twenty-four, that's your bloom. Um, it's a, this year is BESA, projected the river place money once they actually physically pull their permit. Um, I don't know what the other large project, oh, the other large one was, uh, North Point. So that's what the big ones for twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. We will have some money come in twenty-six. Um, the transfer to capital budget for 2025, that 450 was an approved budget amendment for the, uh, uh, cold storage building, I call it, for the Parks Department, and then eighty thousand was money that was, uh, included in the 2026 budget that we just officially just approved, um, so. If you have any questions on that fund.
All right. Any, any questions? Okay. All right, do we have, I believe that takes us to the end.
Yep, just transit.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Page two fifteen for transit.
Transit.
It's been really, I, my perspective has been really, really well, I know, Teresa's been working on, working with that. I would say they're, they're great people to work with, uh, the Metro people so far. I know Teresa's been working with them, getting some detailed information, some raw data to work, to work with, and, um, is that. So we did, I did put the overall increase at 3% to the levy. Um, we do get more state aid with this, more Fairbox revenues, it's been, um, very successful. I don't know if I have any questions on Metro.
Questions on transit?
I guess I just wanna make, sorry, uh, make sure that I'm understanding, so the contract that we have with Madison Metro, that is the second to the last, that's general service operating expenses.
Yeah, I did round it up a little bit.
Basically that is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Other questions? None, okay. Did we miss anything?
No, no, just the overall.
Yeah.
Just like you said about the budget amendments, like, first read will be on Monday, if somebody wants a budget amendment before that, probably pack it, it might be, I think it's going out tomorrow morning. Um, so if you have some right away, otherwise, um, we could have some prepared to bring on the floor for the first read if needed, um, just let me know, otherwise we'll have the second read on the first, uh, Monday in December.
I would just add to that, 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 um, with the operating budget, we, we do have a pretty hard and fast rule that if you make an amendment that adds to the budget, you need to find something to offset that amendment. In other words, we really.
No, I don't, I don't agree, but, we don't, no, that's, do you got, I don't know.
That's been the case as long as I've been on the, as long as I've been on the council.
Okay.
We've always seen.
Not my recollection, I certainly don't necessarily feel that way, but, I mean, there's only $11,000 left to spend anyway, so if it's gonna, any, any amendment more than that would absolutely have to have, have something to.
Right, which is exactly where I was going, right, if.
Sorry.
Um, that we, that we have, we only have $11,000 left in levy, so, in other words, we don't have extra money to spend, so if you have an amendment that adds to the budget, um, having something to offset, because you're recommending trimming, trimming back on something else, or you see something else that you think could be trimmed back, because we don't have, as you can see from the budget, we don't have from, that's how it's going.
That affects, or Mark, that affects our qualification for expenditure restraint, correct?
It does, but, um, as you saw in the last year, we had a lot of problems, it's some huge number, uh, but yeah. I will say in the end, the overall budget, as everybody was saying today at the meeting, the mayor's instruction that the 3%, just go back to what we, the expenditure restraint, is that 3.1%? So we're right on where we're supposed to, you know, so I think everybody, if hurt everybody, they were doing their hardest to meet those requirements that they did, so.
But that's the, and it's, could be projecting, what was our, we're looking to possibly get around the same as the 144,000?
That's what we had, so.
I think that's what we had previously, so, so hopefully it goes up a little bit from there, but just so by, just put it in perspective, that, that is, that would be the cost of going beyond that 11,000, is that.
Correct.
You could risk that 144, so, we're not, we're not in danger of it.
Yeah, yeah, cause you could spend it from other places.
Long as that one ain't in a house.
Yeah.